Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014. This is a special board of education meeting. There is no need for a executive session. May I have the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no agenda modifications, and so we will start off with a board discussion. Oh, adopt agenda, sorry, it's not on here. Oh, okay. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's second? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those? Thank you very much. Now, we will have a brief discussion on the Taylor Manufacturing pilot discussion. You all should have a sheet. It basically is the resolution, which we'll read on Thursday, so I don't think we need to read the whole thing. Is there any, first of all, is there any, have you had a chance to read it and have any questions on the...
Yeah, can you explain this? Let's see now, I get the first part, that's the easy part, six through 10. Explain how that works? So I want to just make sure I understand what happens here, because we talk about phase-out abatement exemption. So the abatement, in other words, based on the final assessed valuation to be set on July 1 of 2020.
Right.
So in other words, there will be, in other words, you won't know what the assessment is until 2020, correct?
Well, the assessment...
Oh, okay, I get it now.
...may or may not go up, but we are going to base the first five years...
Okay, so then, so the first five years are at 1.45 million dollars. So then, at year six, which will be 2020, could it be an assessed, the assessed value may or may not change, but it'll be locked in at whatever it is on July 1st, 2020. And then, so when you go to year six, you're, they, 80% abatement, so that means what?
20% will be added to the, in other words, if it's, I suppose, just an example, goes to 2 million dollars.
Okay.
All right. The difference between 1.45 and 2 million...
Actually, make sure, make the assessment 2.45 million and make it an even million, just so it's easy to do the math ahead.
Then 20% of that will...
$200,000.
Will be added to the 1.45.
Okay.
And then so on, as the years go.
Then when you get down to year 10, then it is at...
It's whatever the, it's full of the assessment.
And then after that, now, so the assessment can't change, so once it's final assessed on July 1st, 2020, well, of course, would it ever change? I guess only if the town reassessed, otherwise it sits where it is forever, unless the town reassessed.
Unless the owner greaves...
Or the owner's sold.
Well, or greaves and causes it to go down.
Well, actually, that's not true. The town, the town of Poughkeepsie is 100%, and they recycle that on a five-year basis, I think, something like that.
Recycle what?
The assessments. It has to, they're 100% assessed.
Yeah.
And that, they have to maintain that, so they have to, they have to keep...
Oh, so in other words, in 2020, by 2025, they might do it again?
Yes.
Okay, I'm with you.
That's their option.
Yeah.
They may not.
Right, right.
But they could, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
The point is, the property's already been reassessed to 1.45. It's what we're going to get anyway.
Doesn't matter, right, whether they're there or not, that's what it's assessed at, right?
If it doesn't get filled in, the assessment's going to only go down.
Right.
Not up. So this is a win for the town of Poughkeepsie, I think it's a win for the school district. It fills that building. I think, as Kevin, you and I discussed the other day, the only thing we don't understand is why the city of Poughkeepsie would want to lose it.
Yeah, I'm a little curious about that too, but it's not really my problem, but...
That's their problem.
I guess I missed part of the discussion. How is it a win for the school district?
Because we have the possibility, starting in year six, of getting more revenue than we would have gotten had it remained empty.
Right now, it's assessed for 1.45 million. So if they don't move and it just sits there, then whoever owns it, that's what they're paying the taxes on.
I'm assuming you've read this part?
I did, okay.
So...
Well, it's, hopefully, they make it, but if they don't before that time period and they sell the property, then the new property owner has the right to get it reassessed, which most likely would drop the assessment on the property.
Well, I guess, I don't, I don't want to assume anything. I've finally figured out what's going on in Hyde Park.
Yeah.
After four changes, which, is that the same or is it different in the city of Poughkeepsie?
Yeah, we're the eyeball. Hyde Park's the eyeball.
Yeah, we're the eyeball. The town gets full, it's 100% assessment and...
It's 100% assessment, yeah, they went through, they paid for an assessment, went through the whole thing and assessed.
Right.
Now, do they carry that assessment over until the five-year increment is completed, at which time they reassess all the properties? Or do they assess each property as it's sold in relationship to what is the fair value of that property at the time it's sold?
There's a little bit different, just vacancy itself. Vacancy itself and selling price has to be figured into the new assessed value. So what it'll effectively be doing, freezing the assessed value that it's at right now till that sixth year, then they, well, 20% is added on, then in the second year it's 40%, 60%, 80%, 100%. So by the 10th year, we'll be at full assessed value and we'll have always collected the taxes for the full 10 years, just different assessed values. So what I guess, the answer to your question, Dan, is the fact that somebody is putting, you know, a business in there will, should affect the assessed values according to their rules, as well as selling price.
Okay. Do we know that they're moving into that building hinges on our decision? Or does it?
Well, we have the president of the company here. He has indicated that based on all the conditions that were involved, including his sale of the property for the jail and interaction with the county execs office and whatnot, that yes, he wants to, he's going to move. I mean, he wants to expand his business. He was going to expand his business next door to his current location on property that he owns. He already has architectural plans, he was already going to build that. He needs to expand. Business he hopes is going to increase in the next, in the next five years, so...
I mean, just putting it out on the line, I mean, this is, you know, this is revenue lost for us, made up by other taxpayers, potentially.
Not with the new deal. Not with the new deal. I think there's a missing piece.
I mean, if we're, if we're giving some reduction in year six through 10, then isn't that giving up revenue?
Well, yeah, start, starting with years, let's just walk it back, to start with years one through five, and, you know, years one through five, it's right now, the valuation is 1.4, if he stays where he is and that building sits there, that's what it's assessed at, so that's what we're going to get tax money for. So years one through five really don't make a whole bit of difference, because that's what we're getting anyway.
We still get the same.
We get the same the first five years.
And really, and then really, and quite frankly, as you go six through 10, you know, if it sat empty that long, it's not likely, I don't know if the value would go up at all, you know, it might stay the same if you're lucky. So that six through 10, again, if it stayed empty, he doesn't make this move and it stayed empty, then, you know, that's what we're still collecting on. So now, for six through 10, if the evaluation changes on 20, on July 1, 2020, and goes up, let's just say it goes up a million dollars, or, yeah, to keep the math simple, then the abatement is only on the difference.
Right.
Not the whole thing. So he's, you know, you're still collecting on, you know, assessed value of 1.45 million plus 20% of the difference, and then, and then it goes up like that.
I understand, I understand the calculation, but my point is...
Yeah, no, I know.
We're potentially giving away money in, sometime in the future, and with the struggle that we have.
Okay, I understand where you're going. Without, without some kind of a deal, it would be financially difficult for Mr. Burdys to move his company.
That was my original question, is whether or not...
At some point, he would say, you know, "I've got the plans, I've got the property, I'd rather be in the other building, but I, you know, I need this bridge to get from where I am to the new, the new location." And given that scenario, I still don't see how this is anything other than a good deal for the district.
The other thing, and, you know, I'm usually not crazy about these things...
I'm too close to it, maybe.
There's one, well, there's something I actually just thought of, that suppose he doesn't move, okay, and, you know, because he just had no desire to, so that building's sitting empty and we're collecting tax on it. So after, after year five, for example, let's just say nothing happens with that building, at some point, that owner's probably going to say, "That's enough," and knock the thing down, and guess what, it's not worth 1.5 million dollars anymore. It's now, and then, so that, so we get clobbered then too, and it just, that's just a fact of life. You know, I mean, you know, I'm warming to this deal more because I'm starting to think of scenarios that could happen that...
And I'm not saying I'm opposed to do it.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, I know, right, right.
I just want to go into this knowing what we're giving up.
Yeah, no, right, I, yeah, I understand.
The potential for tomorrow's dollars.
Right, right.
And with, with, with the way the factor is going...
But only if it's filled. Only if it's filled.
Right, so, and again, so that goes back to the question, I'd be interested, you know, does this, if we don't, if we don't agree to this, is it going forward?
Well, look at this way, look at this way. I think Fargo went out of his 1999.
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
And it's been empty ever since.
Yeah, some flea market moved in there, I don't think that lasted 10 minutes, you know, right? Right, that building would not belong for the world if somebody doesn't move into it, I'm certain of that. I just think at some point, somebody'd say, "I'm not paying on this." And, you know, any building, a facility like that just tends to, as you know, tend to fall apart and just become, you know, and somebody'd end up knocking it down, and then all of a sudden, you'd see the assessment dropping in the basement.
I think we're at the half, glass half-empty and the glass half-full situation. I think, I see it as a positive, no matter which way you want to look at it.
I think it's a great economic situation.
Okay.
For, for, you know, perhaps the town, particularly in general. I think it has, you know, it's limited for, for the district, and my biggest concern is, you know, will we kick ourselves in year six because of giving away money?
Yeah, I'm worried about that year six, I mean, you're talking 20%. Our tax base is, there's still something that's going to be picked up by the other taxpayers.
That's my point, is it shifts it to the other taxpayers.
Shifts it, you know, how much?
Not that this matters, but I do, I am curious, so when, when, I guess, I just, when, when, I don't know if I can ask this question the right way to understand it, but if, 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 you know, an assessed, you know, if they get an abatement on the assessed value, so obviously, everybody else has to kind of pick up the slack for a little while, is it just the school district taxpayers in the town of Poughkeepsie? Or is it the school district taxpayers and the entire, I mean, what happens to, because obviously, you have a tax levy town by town, so, like, where, I mean, I don't know how you, you know what I mean? Who gets, who's picking up the tab, so to speak?
It's a good question, because the assessed value is effectively taken out of the Poughkeepsie piece.
Right.
So any change in assessed values, as we've learned, can have, have an effect...
On the entire district, right?
Right.
Because it's kind of like Hyde Park's total assessed value has dropped...
So the same thing will happen.
This year, and, okay, all right.
And then, and then part two of the question is with regards to the actual dollars, instead of collecting it with a tax bill, like we've typically done for that property before he was there, it was 1.4 million dollar assessed value, somebody was paying those taxes, the current owner, instead, that assessed value comes off of the roll and the owner of Taylor Manufacturing will write a check to the school district each year for the 10 years. And what I'll do in the system is create a receivable, and then the revenue on the, you know, to build our budget will increase and offset the need to tax.
Right, right, okay. So it's not, we're not shifting, yeah, I'm glad you put that out, it's not a shift, it's a different form of revenue.
Correct.
Until year six.
The whole time, until it's on...
Yeah, because the entire time this agreement's in place, they get a bill.
For the whole 10 years.
Right, right.
Right, my point is, but on year six, the difference, it's a shift, the difference could shift.
The shift, and the shift...
They're only going to pay 20% of whatever their increase is.
It would be the 1.4 plus the 20%.
Right, I understand, I understand, right, right. So, but my point is, the 80% of the increase is now going to be bared, you know, what should have been bared by, by the owner is going to be bared by other taxpayers now, that 80%. 80% of the increase.
However, it is an industrial complex that will hopefully continue to be there.
Yeah.
Which we lack, we really do need this in the town. My question is whether or not this is precedent setting for anyone else who wants to come in?
No.
Each and every individual is a separate deal.
Yeah, has to be approved by the board each time.
Just tell everybody, I'm sorry.
The only other question I had is a couple of things, because now, this gets into the legalese, and, you know, it certainly doesn't imply that it would happen with this, this company, so, so when I asked it quick, because I don't think we, I don't think we have one of these anywhere.
No.
Not like we have a big tax base to begin with, so, right now, when a taxpayer, a taxpayer fails to pay their property taxes, that role gets turned over to the county and the county makes up to the school district. So just suppose you send the bill and they don't pay it, not this one, but just anyone, who, who, who makes up for it? Is the county on the hook for it? Does somebody say...
Good question.
Yeah, I want to know. And you're going to have to get that answer before, third, before we vote on this.
If it's off the tax roll, the county doesn't have to.
Right, I, yeah, I want to know who makes up for it if, if he fails to pay. Or does it go back on the, I don't know what happened, you know, in other words, I want to know what, what recourse we have. Because right now, you know, a homeowner fails to pay his property taxes, it gets turned over to the county, and then that's why the thing goes up on the auction block, because the county writes us a check and says, "Okay, here, sorry you didn't make your, they didn't get your payment, here it is," and now we'll go after the homeowner. But this is a different scenario, because if it's, you know, I just want to know, and if the county, if, you know, if the law operates with a pilot, oh, yeah, the county still picks up the tab, then that's, that's good news, that's what I want to hear. But I want to know, before we vote on this, how that works, you know?
I'll clarify on this, but this becomes a legal contract between Taylor Manufacturing and the school district, for which we have, we'd have every legal...
Right.
Yeah.
That, that's fine, and that...
Until an organization goes bankrupt and you're online with all the other creditors.
Yeah, there's going to be a county court going after that.
If they were to go bankrupt and close and continue to do business, you mean?
No.
No, the pilot goes away. I assume the pilot goes away, then, then who owns the property, yeah, okay, I see it's a little complicated.
Well, they own the property, I mean, so there's going to be, but, but what's the...
What makes the pilot, what makes the pilot disappear? In other words, you know, right, does it, it just goes back on the rolls and it acts like any other property at that point?
Normally, it would be, yeah, failure to, failure to satisfy the terms of the contract at any time when brought to attention would, would void the contract, which means it's going to go back on the tax.
Has it been drawn up yet? The contract for this?
I would imagine, once we, once we have our resolution, the...
Nah, 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 I'm not voting on any resolution, I want to see the contracts, you know, you can't sign it until we vote for it, but I want to see what the terms are and how this thing operates before I vote on this thing.
Yeah, and I think our council should do that.
Yeah, and that's what our, that's what our council should be doing.
These are the terms, these are the terms.
Nah, I asked a lot of questions that aren't answered on this.
Yeah.
Or if Dan, if Dan, Dan was the one who did it? Then Dan can write a memo and describe how this thing operates and how these things were put together legally, but that's what I want to see.
So Kevin, can you outline, I understand what you want to know.
Well, obviously, a contract must get drawn up, I'm assuming, and if that's the case, then I want to see what the draft's going to look like, because I want to know what the terms are, or, there's obviously some legal, or, there's obviously some, some...
Guaranteed.
Yeah, there's some, what I'm looking for, there's statutes that are put together how a pilot operates in New York State, so I would like his analysis on that and how these things are generally, how they operate, because just voting on the resolutions, all well and good, and, and if everything, you know, business is great and the check gets written every year, that's no harm, no foul, but when it goes south and I didn't understand how the thing operated, and I don't know, you know, nobody can tell me, well, what happens and who picks up the tab, I want this information before we vote on it. So, you know, we've never voted on one, we don't, I don't think we have, we don't have, in, anywhere in the school district, we don't have a pilot, I don't think we've ever done this before.
I think we did, we did it about that hotel.
Saint Francis.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, well...
That went away.
I wasn't on the board, so...
Yeah. What happened when it went away?
Kevin, this might help clarify a little bit. The pilot can't happen without this, so thus, the contract and agreement can't pursue post, you know, in other words, the town of Poughkeepsie, the county and the town of Poughkeepsie, and...
Yeah, no, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that I have to understand how the thing works, because, you know, and that's, I think that's a basic question, these things go on all the time, somebody must know how they work, and really, that's what our, our council should be providing us as an opinion on, okay, this is how the thing works, and, you know, if, if things go south, these are the things you can expect to happen, you know, that's the analysis I want.
Okay, we can see if Dan can put something together and/or be here on Thursday. We do have Ron Hicks from the county executive's office who does have some information, I don't know if the board wants to give him a moment to, do we have a public participation?
No, but in this discussion, if, if it's okay with the rest of the board...
Yeah, it's fine.
Just come on up to the microphone, Ron, thank you, and just state your name and...
Hi, good evening, Ron Hicks, strategic planning and development for Dutchess County. I'm not responsible for the IDA, but I'm familiar with them, I've run IDAs before in the past, and, very good questions, and actually, there is a good answer for that. And the contract that is drawn up does require the manufacturer or the company that's receiving the pilot to perform, and there is annual compliance that's required by state of New York and by the IDA's bylaws, and if at any time during the contract period they do not perform to the terms of the agreement, that can be immediately terminated, in which case that does go, the property does go back on the tax rolls at full assessment. And, yes, the county is then unfortunately responsible for covering the expense. I don't know the timing between when a taxpayer fails to pay and the county actually picks up that burden, I doubt it's immediate, it probably does take several months, but the county does become responsible for that property.
Yeah, school taxes are usually collected in September, and then, like, by November, the role's turned over to the county, and at that point, then, you know, they pretty much, that's when you're getting the check from the county, right, early January, February timeframe, after the role's been turned in.
March 31st.
Right, yeah, so, yeah.
And the IDA is required to monitor the pilot payments, there are numerous pilot agreements throughout the county and the state. I don't know how many of them are in Dutchess County, I did hear of one, I think, prior to my arrival, or around my arrival, that was supposed to be for Hyde Park, that project did not get one, that, that project is not going forward. And I think you had a, you asked about the actual contract itself. I am not, again, a counsel, and I do not run the IDA, but it's my understanding that that contract comes, is put together based on the taxing jurisdictions decisions that are made, and then it goes before the IDA for a vote. I would defer to counsel of the IDA to see if your, your decision could be conditional upon final approval of the contract.
Are we, are we a signatory to the, to the contract, or is it just the IDA?
You know, most IDAs throughout New York State do not require the authority or the authorization of the board or any of the taxing jurisdictions. In fact, that's one of the problems with most of the IDAs around the state, is that they just go ahead and they decide what you're going to get, and you have to like it. In Dutchess County, they have adopted a policy where they utilize the 485B model, which I think a good number of municipalities here participate in, and if the applicant to the IDA deviates from the 485, it requires a consensus of the taxing jurisdictions. The county has never played a role in that, in those discussions and negotiations, they leave it to the town and the school district. But I do believe that the IDA has the authority, not as a matter of practice or policy, but they have the authority to move forward with whatever pilot they decide. So I do know that there is some time constraints here, so I will be happy to check for you with IDA's counsel to see if, if you do have to make a decision on Thursday, if that can be conditional upon review of a final agreement. And I don't know, I know that the town of Poughkeepsie has already opined on one, and I do believe it has to be changed, I don't know if, if they've gone through that process yet with the town board, do you know? Okay, so this still has to go before the town board for final approval. It did? Okay. But I'd be happy to enter that, you know, find out for you from the IDA and answer any of the questions you might have.
Right, and that's fine, but I still think we should have our legal counsel review it and provide me his opinion.
Well, or, or make our decision contingent on approval of a final contract.
Right, well, here's, I'm saying, I get, what I'm saying is, you know, I don't even really know how these, how these things work, and, you know, I, we all had some questions here, and some good questions, and, and I don't think it's unreasonable to expect that they can't be answered by Thursday, even if they're answered Thursday evening, to be honest with you. I've been able to digest the numbers, I'm okay with the numbers, I just want to know the whole picture before, before I agree to this. So even if Dan can come to the meeting Thursday, and I don't, you know, that's up for debate whether that could even be done publicly, because, you know, quite frankly, it's not like it's a litigation thing, it's probably important that the public hears the same thing that we're hearing as far as, okay, how, what's, how it operates, and, you know, that's what I'm kind of looking for, you know?
Right, and if he's available, he's certainly...
Yeah.
Come, or I'm sure he'd be more than happy to prepare something that I could read, or I know Doug would be willing...
Yeah, we can read in the public, but obviously, I want my own copy to read it and digest it myself, if he's prepared a written analysis.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would actually be more comfortable, if I were any of you, to get from the IDA's counsel, under the chairman's signature, answers to your question before Thursday. I don't know what, what that gives you in terms of any recourse, but at least you're getting written correspondence from the IDA chairman and IDA counsel answering your questions, and so...
Well, I think that's, that's a good idea, and actually, why don't we have him funnel it through Dan, and have Dan review it, and then provide us, you know, his, you know, his, you know, he can just say, "Yep, I read this, this makes sense, here you go," or...
It makes more questions, Dan may have questions.
Right, yeah, exactly, yep.
Yeah, I'll just make one other point, only because I think this is a very healthy discussion, and as Kevin's had a lot of great questions, but because this is going to be televised, I think it's important to acknowledge that Taylor Manufacturing has been in business for 103 years, and really has a patent pending for, you know, another extension of their business. And, uh, really, uh, has a, a patent pending for, you know, another, uh, extension of their business that, you know, has incredible potential to grow. So, because, uh, we do have a large, uh, viewing audience, I, I just thought it'd be important to point out that the Taylor Manufacturing was in the city of Poughkeepsie. And they're, uh, purchasing in the town of Poughkeepsie, the portion that's in our school district, and again, it's a, it's a, it's a local manufacturing firm, uh, that is well-established in the Hudson Valley. So, just clarify that, yeah, because if, if somebody was joining in here, um, without that background information, um, it's a big missing piece, so.
I think, you know, and, and, and I will also acknowledge both they, um, and the other folks involved, and Doug and Wayne, for, uh, you know, because quite frankly, the first thing that was proposed was not particularly palatable, um, to me, uh, and I think some other board members. And, um, the fact that everybody was kind of willing to rework it and make it more palatable, um, and that's why I certainly, you know, wanted, you know, I, it, it, it's, it's, it's a serious thing we're discussing. Uh, it has s- serious implications, both for the property owner, as well as for the rest of the residents of the school district and, and the school district itself. So, you know, that's why I'm being, you know, trying to be appropriately cautious, and, uh, again, I'm comfortable with the numbers. I just want to know some of the other answers to these, because again, we don't have, we don't have one active and, and haven't had one. I've never voted on one before in my previous terms on the board. Um, they're, they're not that common, and it's important that people understand, you know, including the people that are actually going to vote on it, to understand what the answers to those questions are and what, what the implications are for this. Again, I'm not opposed to it in con, and, and, uh, in concept, but I think it's important that there's some education that's done, so that we're comfortable voting for it. That's my view.
Okay, um, I'd kind of like to know if there's anybody who has an opposing opinion that's not comfortable with these numbers. Okay. Then, uh, hopefully, we get our answers. Um, thank you, Kevin, for bringing those up. They're, as we said, good, uh, good things to know. Um, I come from a trusting family, so I, I didn't think of those things, uh, yeah, uh, but, um, hopefully, we can get that settled by Thursday. Should they be settled, we should be able to.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's, that, and that's why I wanted to bring, and I'm glad we had the discussion tonight, because I really don't want to blow this up on Thursday. Um, I, you know, again, you got a full day, really two full workdays between now and Thursday's meeting, that I don't know why somebody can't sit down and.
Okay.
Get these questions answered and provide either a, a in-person opinion or something in writing that, that makes, you know.
Is there a timetable we're working on with this?
Well, I, I know that Taylor Manufacturing, um, they're behind in the schedule that they would have, uh, preferred. Um, and that was precisely why we put it on this special board meeting, to have some discussion, because we thought it would be too much to put the resolution on Thursday and have the discussion on Thursday. So, you know, thankfully, we did, we have some time for questions. Um, ideally, I think when we were first approached, um, they, the hope was to have this all completed, uh, last month. So, I know that they're, uh, anxiously waiting our, uh, vote, or your vote.
I just want to, if I could, Kevin, just clarify the follow-ups.
Oh, sure.
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right, so, I'm going to be seeking the opinion of the attorney, uh, on process, which would include a memo of some sort and/or, um, attendance at the Thursday meeting, uh, to answer questions.
It might be easier if he's able to come, yeah, yep.
Um, the second thing is this, um, information on default, if there was a default.
Yeah, just, yeah, right, hundred and three years, I'm kind of hoping not, hoping for another hundred and three from them, but, but, you know, and I would ask that of anybody. I certainly want to imply that I see that happening here, because I don't.
Then a little bit in, in the memo with regards to how the pilot operates and how it works, that kind of thing. Um, and then from, um, the county side, uh, Mr. Hicks, um, is going to work with the chair.
Counsel of the IDA.
Counsel of the IDA to put together an opinion, um, that'll be funneled through our legal counsel, which I'll be able to give you.
Yeah, because I want, I want our counsel passing on it.
I would also ask that, just a general review to identify any other exposure that we may not be looking at.
Yeah.
Is there something, is there something we're not identifying, we're not looking at? This isn't something we deal with on a daily basis.
Let me point out that we did have Dan with us at the public hearing. We did have him review these numbers. We did have him rever, review all the pertinent information about the company, about the IDA's proposals. Um, he's worked with us throughout.
Yeah, I.
Has, has he provided any report?
Exactly, that's what I want, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying, you know, I, I'm glad that he was there every step of the way, and that's, that's a, certainly a good thing. But, you know, when I think, when a board is being asked to, to, to vote on something like this, that information should be compiled and provided to the board as a whole by the attorney.
Okay, we'll see if we can get that for Thursday. I will not be here. By the way, you're in charge Thursday. I won't be here.
Say what?
Yes, yeah.
You demand, Dan.
Mm-hmm. Okay, are there any other questions, any other discussion?
What is the yellow thing?
Oh, yeah, we are curious about that.
You want to give a demo? Uh, first, uh, let me, uh, introduce, Mr. Bertis is the, uh, you're the president, right, of the, of Taylor Tool Company? And they, uh, they're, they manufacture specialized clamping equipment that does wood gluing and things like that. Uh, I guess, one of their engineers, or two of their engineers, had more spare time than they knew what to do with, and they invented this, and I'll let you, Mr. Bertis, explain what it is.
As Mr. Heeter said, our hundred and three years is based on building woodworking machinery of a variety of designs and styles. But one of the things that we invented recently was this Segway-like scooter, which is self-balancing and self-steering. And, uh, we have recently received a patent on it, and I'll explain to you what the patent's on, but basically, inside, it's got batteries and a gyro and servo motors that drive the wheels independently.
That's cool.
So, basically, what you do, and this is one of the things that's in our future, we're not quite sure where it's going to go and how big it's going to be, is to sit down, and the gyro, of course, balances you. So, you can just sit on it and relax, you can stick your legs out, and I can turn my golf bag on it, and like a Segway, when you lean forward, it goes forward.
This is cool.
And when you lean backwards, it goes backwards.
I like it, wow.
And the thing that we applied for and received the patent on is the steering mechanism, and the seat pivots inside, and by swiveling my hips is how I drive the wheels independently. As I can go around turns. So, we think usage will be recreation, large warehouses, possibly medical applications. It's hard to know where it's going to go.
Wow.
So, we're in the process of refining the design and eventually bringing it to market. Segway still has a patent that's in force, but this is an infringement of it. And so, we have to wait two more years before we bring it to market, but we need two years to develop it, and that's why we want the bigger bill.
That would be pretty cool, to be built in Poughkeepsie. And this, and thank you for coming, because that, that's important to us, to understand, you know, um, a hundred and three-year-old business, and everybody kind of knew it was there, but doesn't really know what goes on. And that's, it's very educational, and hopefully, that's now been conveyed to our residents who've watched on TV, and that's pretty slick.
I'll send you a couple of fifteen-year-olds to help you out there.
Now, the inventor actually is a Hyde Park resident.
Even better.
He, uh.
Yeah, that's great.
He drives it around, uh, he lives on, um, the housing development off of nine G, that, uh, is just up across the street from the road that cuts over to almost by the Dinsmore Golf Course, so that housing development.
Oh, Connolly Drive, yeah, 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 off of North Cross Road, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Up and around there.
That's cool.
Testing battery strength and durability.
And, and again, this, it's, it's a lot easier to, uh, you know, do something like this when you kind of see, you know, so thanks for the show and tell, at least for me, I think that was very important, and, and means something to, to people that, again, want to see this, a local business succeed. And, um, you know, and I think it'll be important to our voters to see that, too, when, you know, when we decide on this, that they'll understand, you know, some of our thought process, finding the, the, deciding it. That's pretty cool.
Okay, thank you very much.
See you on Thursday, I hope. Meeting on Thursday is at Havlin, right?
It is, it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't know if you heard that, um, Mike, the meet, okay.
I hope you don't mind if you want to bring that again, because there'll be a lot more people in the audience. Yeah, thanks, that's cool.
Yeah.
Well, I guess nothing worthwhile comes easily, but it will, it can, it can happen. Okay, moving on, we have a presentation on the Dutchess County Board of Cooperative Services, formerly known as BOSEs, and their proposed budget. Or informally, yes, you're right.
Thank you, Doug. So, tonight, uh, is our annual BOSEs vote, and, uh, the Board of Education is in each, um, district throughout Dutchess County. Um, we'll be voting on two items each year, and those two items are the general administrative costs of the BOSEs budget, as well as the retiree health expense. Um, for tonight's vote, the increases in, in these lines are two point one nine percent. After a full review of where we are with the BOSEs budget right now, the increase to, to, to the overall BOSEs budget is three point seven one percent. The remainder, after the administrative expenses are, are concerned, are all cost-based, and that's based on participation, and we pay by, by what we participate in. Uh, this here is the, uh, full administrative budget, which we weren't given before in the past, and it was requested, so I did add that. Um, and that is their full administrative budget, and the portion, again, that we're really looking at this evening, is the expense for administrative and retirees' health. And that's three hundred fifty thousand, three fifty-eight for fourteen fifteen, as you can see. Um, and that's seven thousand five hundred and twelve dollars more than it was in thirteen fourteen. And our increase, as I mentioned to begin with, is two point one nine percent, it's very simple, um, because there's very few things to vote on. Um, but again, the board's only voting on these two codes. I always call BOSEs to find out what things are, are causing increases in their budget, just like we do, uh, for our own general fund budget. Uh, for administrative, there's normal increases in administrative costs, things like salaries and benefits, uh, some of the similar things that we deal with. And, uh, they have also, uh, been making savings to their administrative costs by reductions made in their physical space and the FTEs, similar to what most school districts and BOSEs are doing throughout New York State. With regards to retirees' health expense, it is a, more of a fixed cost, and that's bolstered due to health insurance increases that we all face. Um, and an increase in the number of retirees certainly, um, makes more expense in that line. Um, and it was nice to see that BOSEs had utilized some of the accrued funds, similar to a fund balance, but different for BOSEs, to lower the retiree health costs. So, they are doing proactive things to, to see that, uh, their administrative expenses are under, um, you know, being looked at and kept low. Uh, the BOSEs budget, each component district pays a portion of the administrative expenses based on the ARWADA, and the wealth indexes and a formula. Uh, for all their BOSEs expenses, the districts pay a portion, as I mentioned, through the coster participation, um, but we don't vote on the, the coster participation, rather, rather, we sign up. Uh, this is the end of the show, and I'll end, and any questions?
What's up first, the budget move? So, move.
Any discussion?
What's that? To approve, yeah. My move to approve, sorry.
And that second was to approve? Any discussion? All those in favor? Now. Go to six point two, voting on BOSEs board members.
Well, at least we have a choice this year, so at least we have a choice.
We do have a choice. Um, I believe Thomas Hurley and Robert Rubin are incumbents.
No, Reel, I think, and Rubin was the one we nominated.
Oh, Rubin's the, the new one, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. The first two are incumbents, uh, Rubin's the last.
Now, something I should have done, and I didn't, can, I don't know if somebody can look it up on the, on the internet, what I, what I want, just, just because I, I mean, we'll have to talk about this, but I, I do know Mr. Rubin is a current member, I think, of the Wappingers School Board, I think he is. See, that's what I want to verify. What, first, I want to know, are they all serving on a board other than BOSEs?
Uh, Hurley is on.
Milbrook.
Uh, yeah, and has been, but is he still, and is he still on Milbrook's board, okay.
I don't know Reel.
Beacon, but I don't know if he's on the Beacon Board. I know he's been on the Beacon Board, but I don't know if he currently is, so that's what I wanted to find out.
All right.
And the same with Rubin.
We can do that, we can do that.
And the only, and, you know, because, you know, obviously, we're picking two of the three, we don't really know any of them, we'll have to probably talk about it a little bit, but one of the things that, you know, it's a lot to be on a board. I can't imagine what it's like to be on a board and a BOSEs board, so, you know, I guess, if, if I had a choice, if one of them is not currently serving on a board, I tend to lean there, not knowing anything about them, um, you know.
We had emails.
Yeah, and I can't remember.
Um, it might be.
They were really specific, you know, I don't.
Yeah, if somebody can pull up the emails.
Because I, if I were running, I'd say, oh, I was on the Hyde Park Board for X number of years, and if I didn't say, I'm not on it now, it may not be so obvious, so that's what I wasn't sure about when I read the emails.
All right, Reel is not on, not on the Beacon Board of Education.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. And Hurley is currently on Milbrook?
Been on for like twenty years.
Double-check Rubin, I think he is on Wappingers currently, but I just wanted to. I think I would have looked at this before, but I literally wasn't thinking about it until just now.
Uh, Robert Rubin is a member of the.
Currently a member of Wappingers, okay.
They have two vacant seats, by the way.
Yeah, I see that, and they got what, eleven people running or something?
Five, right, yeah.
They have eleven people running, I think.
Yep.
Right, Wappingers?
All right.
Have eleven candidates, that's crazy.
All right, so we know.
Two vacancies plus two others up.
We don't know if Rubin's term is up.
Yeah, do we know where his term is? Does, does it say when his term expires? I don't know if they list it with their board list, you know, like, say, term, like we do, you know, with the, everyone, the current members and when your term expires.
Okay, any other information that anybody wants me to look up?
Sorry, I left the iPad in the car, because I said I has a short agenda, I don't need the agenda in front of me.
I managed to get rid of my board docs there.
So, just, and I'm just making general comments, because I, you know, want, and to fill the time here, Mr. Reel is not currently a board member. He has served in Beacon, he's currently a BOSEs board member, and he's had experience as a business official in school districts, right, if I remember his email correctly. So, that's kind of the general thought on him. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say about the others.
I only know one of them, so.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, right.
So, um, we just vote yay or no on each of the three?
You kind of, could kind of vote, we kind of have to decide which two we're voting for, and then I think you just make a motion, right, I know.
How do you want to do that?
Does anyone personally, not, you know, does anyone professionally or personally know any of the three candidates?
I've, I've met Hurley and, uh, um, he used to come to the, uh, School Board Association, uh.
Okay.
Meeting, so.
I remember him years ago, I, I met him years ago, too, yeah, he's, yeah, I think he's a, you know.
However, the, they, the, the top two are, are incumbents, at least they know what the job is.
Right.
And what they're getting into. Well, I'm inclined to vote for Reel.
Yeah, I kind of was, too, only because he's not currently a school board member, so we know he's got at least enough time to, you know, and his other experience.
And now, I, I think it's a question of whether or not we think a change is in order.
Yeah, well, you know, like, here's the other thing, too, if we vote for Reel, you know, you start thinking, okay, although it looks like, you know, Mr. Rubin lives in the town of Poughkeepsie, but still, you think, you know, Southern Dutchess with Wappingers and Beacon, which Reel lives in, and then he's. and Beacon, which Reel lives in. And then you say, well, if you vote for Hurley, that's more center of the county, it represents a different area. I mean, that's kind of really what you're, you know, for lack of anything else. I mean, unless somebody's a, a total lunatic, and I don't think that's the case with these three guys, that i- it's really a toss-up, and it's just kind of what makes sense, you know?
Well, I'll put you on the spot. Put up two names, and then we'll vote on it and see if we want to promote those.
It sounds really lazy, um, but I would probably nominate, or, uh, move, uh, Mr. Hurley and Mr. Reel, just based on, I talked myself into it just now.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that one.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I'm, I'm in favor of that one, so. All right, so we'll look for those two names.
I mean, I'd look for it.
That's right.
Okay, just a reminder that there is a, a full board meeting on Thursday, April 24th, 7:00, at the Havlin Middle School in the auditorium. And now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.